This is our work session scheduled for 10 o'clock. Work sessions are an opportunity for board members to discuss issues informally with staff and invited guests. The board encourages members of the public to attend work sessions and listen to the discussion, but there is generally no opportunity for public comment. Members of the public wishing to address the board are welcome to do so during the board's regularly scheduled meetings held twice monthly. We'll start with board communications. And it looks like Commissioner Bangs, you are first on the list.
Good morning, everyone. Um, so I went to a CFTLC meeting this, this last Friday. And there were some, there was a presentation discussing an alternative HCP that is potentially that, that the counties want to submit to ODF and NOAA Fisheries for the NEPA process. And so I expressed some frustration during the meeting about lack of discussion with Clotseth County prior to the presentation. Um, I think that Leanne can attest to how important it was to me to have conversation prior to this presentation. Um, the moral of the story is, is that anything that, um, anything that the, the counties, the CFTLC offers during the NOAA process will impact Clotseth County. There's, there's an unlikelihood of any negative impacts because there's going to be also other special interest groups entering their own HCP ideas into the NEPA process. And so it's just, it's just part of what happens. So anyhow, um, overall, it was a, an eye-opening discussion. And I strongly advocated for Clotseth County being in the room for discussions. And so that was, I think what we all came away with was that Clotseth County needs communication. Um, other than that, uh, not a whole lot on my plate. I did want to say thank you for, um, all of the work that staff is doing in regards to this new ordinance that we are presenting. There has been a lot of concern and discussion in my particular area, especially regarding flower stands and vegetable stands. And so I hope, um, I hope that new verbiage that's coming from the county, um, is, is clear. Cause I think that that's, that's a lot of what the concern is in my area is clarity and to make sure that, you know, what they're doing isn't wrong and, um, and whatnot. So anyhow, uh, I just wanted to express that yes, there's, there's a lot of concern and then hopefully us as a county can, can offer some clarifications for folks so that they, um, aren't, aren't concerned about their flower stands, um, and their, and their produce stands. So anyhow, thank you and.
Yep. Thank you, Commissioner Bangs. So I think, um, and I've talked with the county manager about this, having a work session, I think, is very important for us to discuss timber policy and what our alternatives are and also what impacts to revenue. Any of these, say, HCP lawsuits, whatever they might be, uh, how this might impact us in the bottom line of our general fund. So I appreciate the, your attendance there as well as Commissioner Thompson. And I hope to have that work session soon. And with regards to the ordinance, I too received a lot of emails this weekend and phone calls, uh, primarily about flower stands. And I appreciate the staff, uh, taking the time to, to review this and maybe further define what a commercial activity is. And maybe make a distinction between hobbyists and, uh, flower stands that are not bringing in large, uh, sources of revenue and don't have a great deal of activity. I think that's perfectly legitimate to, to try to make that distinction. So appreciate the staff's time on that. Commissioner Toyoka.
Uh, good morning, everyone. Not a lot to report, just that, you know, continuing effort on the public works, you know, that, uh, our project there with the new structure, you know, the new, uh, resiliency project. Just, we'll have more meetings up on further ahead in the next following days and weeks. And then I think then we'll have some more concrete news to share. And I think at some point, uh, I would like to have, I've talked to, you know, the county manager. I think we should have some kind of maybe executive session agenda item though where we can just have discussions with them amongst us about that project. And, um, then ultimately, you know, goal and direction for the county that would best serve our constituents. I think that would be a wonderful, uh, thing we can do if we can schedule something like that. Thank you.
I agree. Thank you, Commissioner Toyoka. Commissioner Thompson.
Thank you. I just got to say, if we're going to deal with the Socratic method in our, um, sessions could, uh, is Aristotle far behind? That's kidding. That's kidding. That's an insider joke. Um, I love that. I'm a humanities major. So that was great. You know, we had Senator Wyden with a town hall this past weekend. And I'm, I just deeply appreciate the work of Fritz Graham and, and Senator Wyden on our behalf. Alimea for Congresswoman Bonamici, Stelly, Stacy Joakimson, I can never say her name right for Senator Merkley because they are such powerful allies to help us serve our constituents. And to the extent that we can keep them involved, hooray. All three of them attended the Coal Pack, uh, meeting last Thursday. So that was wonderful. And at Coal Pack, we have a new staffer, Ariane Colombo. She focused us on workforce issues. And it was excellent. It was, um, a vibrant, robust discussion on workforce issues as they impact economic development. So, um, now that, now that we're doing Zoom meetings, if anybody is interested in sitting in on those meetings, you're more than welcome. For Clotseth County, we have, uh, Seaside City Councilor Steve Wright attending, uh, several others. Kevin Leahy, a bunch of folks. So it's, um, it's a really heartwarming discussion that is geared always toward producing economic development benefits to our constituents. And again, uh, as the chair points out, that's our bottom line. So that concerns us a lot. Yesterday at AOC, we had a joint meeting of the leadership of the Budget and Finance Committee and the Membership Committee. Talking about the AOC dues structure, also talking about how AOC can work with us all over the state and with NACO, the National Association of County Staff, to look at helping us spend more efficiently and effectively the federal dollars that are coming in. So again, we have relationships, we have alliances, we want to be most effective in delivering positive value. And, um, so that's what I'm involved with. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. And I agree with you. I think we're very well served by Stacy Alley and, uh, and Fritz as our liaisons to our federal representation. So yeah, I, I agree with you. Commissioner Webb.
Yeah. Good morning, all. Um, I too, uh, spent the weekend, uh, talking to constituents about, um, the right-of-way ordinance. And, um, I, um, I particularly, um, I, I, I don't quite know. What I would like us to do is to be able to set some time aside in a work session, uh, to talk about this issue again. One of the things I'm realizing is that, uh, there's a, there, as usual, uh, we often have definitional issues with our constituents, constituents who don't always know what's a county road and what's a state highway and, and, um, what's a city street, et cetera. And so there was a lot of confusion about that. I don't think we should go down the road of assessing, um, what constitutes a commercial activity. I think that's a very slippery slope. And we get into issues of taxes and other things. And I think we shouldn't, I, I think we shouldn't, shouldn't go there. The issue, um, with most of the people I talked to was that their stands are, um, are often, most often, they think on their own property. In which case I, I don't think we have jurisdiction, um, et cetera. I think that talking to them about making certain that, that they're not, that their customers are, are acting safely, are parking, uh, in a responsible manner, um, are not obstructing traffic, et cetera. I don't think we should get too complicated on the whole issue of whether, of the extent to which these are commercial enterprises. Because I wouldn't want, I, I certainly wouldn't want, um, I'm a big Girl Scout advocate. And, um, I certainly wouldn't want a cookie stand to be, to be questioned about anything other than the safety of traffic. And so I think we need to kind of keep it simple. But, but, and I think we can get on, on it quickly. I hope that we can get on this quickly because it's, um, we've got lots of important things to do. And I think this we can take care of very easily, um, in a simplistic matter. I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner. I don't have anything. I thought we'd move right into our legislative update. And Phil is here.
Thank you, commissioners. Um, just quick updates this week. The big pick, the big item on the table is that we have the first major deadline for the legislative session. It's called the First Chamber of Origin Deadline. That is for this Friday, that any bill that states, um, any bill that's not in revenue or joint ways and means has to have a work session scheduled in its first chamber by this Friday at five o'clock. If it is not, um, it's considered dead, um, and will have to either be reintroduced or sometimes you'll see an amendment pop up in another bill later in session. But it has to have a work session scheduled. It doesn't have to occur by Friday. That has to occur by April 13th, but it has to be posted as a work session to stay alive. I guess a couple of good news, uh, the good news on that is Senate Bill 622, which is the bonding bill for levy repair that received a work session scheduled this week. So that will continue to move forward and then move on to ways and means capital construction, which is good because one, it got out of the policy committee and then it gets to a committee where there's no deadlines associated. In addition, Senate Bill 301, which we had as a priority opposed bill. This is the banning of, uh, Gil, Gilnet fishing, um, the high priority of Senator Johnson's as well to not move forward. That has received no action, no public hearing or anything. So if it continues, that is considered dead on Friday as well. So crossing our fingers, we have three days there, um, to make sure it doesn't move. But, uh, so those are the good news ones. The other one, Commissioner Bangs, you had brought up Kahoots a couple of calls ago. That bill 2417 is likely to get a hearing. There's going to be an amendment associated with that. They are going to have rule. It's a currently, if I correct me if I'm wrong, currently it's a grant program. They're going to amend that, that if you're a rural county, you only have to have a 25% match. But if you're a metro county, you still have to come in at a 50% match. And the, the goal there is rural counties will not have the infrastructure in place that some of these bigger counties would. So that extra 25% would hopefully go towards helping build that. And so, um, but they do, uh, so just giving you heads, heads up on that, that amendment's being drafted. The two timber tax bills, um, 2379. This is, uh, ones we talked about earlier, and there will be a report that Ann will be sending you on both of these. They are getting sessions, uh, work sessions today, and I believe tomorrow. 2379 is the severance tax, um, that excludes the first 25,000 board feet. That looks like it's moving forward. There will be an adoption, the, the sponsor of it, HOBE, will have a technical fix amendment that is going to be adopted that just clarifies, um, things that came up in the first hearing dates, items like that. The other amendment, David Brock Smith is, uh, introducing what gut and stuff the bill or completely replace it. That's not moving anywhere. They just, just not have the vote in the committee to do so. And then the other timber tax bill, 2070. This is one that, um, this is the one that it just extends and prepare the updated privilege taxes on forest products harvested on the forest lands. There's the other bill that would have made it permanent. The compromise was they will move forward with this bill that just extends the tax through 2023. And then the, in the interim, they'll have a conversation of whether there's a, um, what to do long-term with this. The other bill would have made it permanent, um, with no sunset. This just extends the current sunset one more biennium. So just wanted to let you know on that. And then I think the last quick update that we were following is that the lottery came in and did a presentation to the Joint Audits Committee. Gave an update on where lottery funds are, uh, over the fiscal year 2019. So they are about 15.1% down over the last fiscal year. That's just something that I'm, I want to keep an eye on because by the time they transfer these funds into other state programs, they're usually behind, the legislators already, legislature is already adjourned and we start seeing those things pop up. For economic development programs, uh, they transferred $583 million from the lottery into those economic development programs that usually do reach rural counties, but that is about 130 million less from the year before. So there's conversations and capital construction of, do we, do we try to make up a portion of that? That, but that will be playing out between now and June. But I just wanted to make you folks aware of that because that will, uh, that report is likely to pop up multiple times before it now in the end of session. Um, and that does tend to fund a lot of stuff. So. But that was just a quick down and dirty report. And then after this Friday, we will have a much more better, or much better picture on what's actually moving forward. What's dead that we can remove from bill lists, watch lists, things like that. So.
Philip, I see Commissioner Thompson has a question for you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, um, I'm very interested in your comment that things will happen after the legislature adjourns. And I'm not sure, are, are we paying you to keep track of those things and to keep us, uh, informed as to how we can best be involved in those efforts? Particularly those associated with gaining revenue and making dispersments of those revenue. I think we're very interested in that as a board. Mr. Chair, I hope you agree with that. And colleagues, I hope you agree with that.
I, I do agree.
I think the conversation of how long our contract is would definitely be a conversation for you folks, um, internally. But if we were honored enough to continue to do that, that is something we do. We track the, the rulemaking and policy ramifications, all of this legislature as it goes through the agencies after session. So.
Right. Talk's cheap. When do we eat? Where's the money? How do we get it? How do we use it for the benefit of our constituents? So thank you, sir.
Any other questions? Is there anything you need from us, Philip?
No, um, I forwarded on the, uh, the report just to get, I did forward on a bill report with, um, some of the need review bills, um, that we discussed last time. If I could just get some clarity on where the county would like to be positioned on those. But, uh, that's not pressing, pressing. I know you have a lot on your plates because after Friday, we will be revamping that report and taking out anything that's considered dead. And so that, um, you're not wasting your time on looking on bills that have no chance going anywhere. So, um, but next week, we will definitely need a report, kind of will push that out to you. But having some feedback on that would be the best, uh, best hope we could have.
Commissioner Webb has a question.
Yes, what, um, Phil, what, what is the status of the bill that was trying to, uh, do away with OFRI?
I need to look that up and get that back to you, Commissioner. Can I email you an update on that?
Absolutely, absolutely.
I'm writing that down right now to get to you.
Commissioner Webb, I had a question. What, what is OFRI?
It is the, um, organization that is funded by the state to be an advocate for the timber industry.
Okay.
And I think they were proposing to eliminate it completely, if I'm thinking of the right bill.
Yeah.
Okay. I will track that down for you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Bangs?
How best can we communicate with, uh, so I guess this question could be to county council. Um, how best can we communicate our thoughts on the bills that were emailed to us and still maintain, um, the meeting law situation, uh, making sure that we don't? Are we wanting to individually communicate to PacWest or are we communicating? Like, I just want clarification on how I can communicate my thoughts on these bills that were emailed. And then just for clarification, um, purposes only, OFRI is an educational support for our secondary school districts and our, you know, it, it's basically educational support in natural resources. So OFRI funds, um, school field trips. They fund, um, other activities. They provide curriculum support. They provide a lot of free stuff to our school districts, um, in regards to natural resource education. So, and then squirrel back, oh, sorry, I think Kathleen or Leanne, Commissioner Thompson had something else to say. Thank you.
Thank you. So OFRI, um, I think we may have a divergence of opinion among the commissioners, which we have not yet deliberated and resolved. So before we go individually communicating our positions, I think we need, um, a process among us to basically work out our differences. Because as electeds, we know that we can take an individual position, but that's distinct from, we have collaborated and we have developed a board decision. So, um, this is new and what a good problem to have that we are deliberating so we can distinguish between our individual and the board's position on these issues. Uh, and I think maybe county council or, uh, the county manager, somebody ought to give us a process and we ought to do something about this. Because I've had very positive experiences with OFRI. They've been, um, they've helped me learn about the industry and about, uh, how automation can produce, uh, forest products with added value, which increase our tax base, um, and our economy and can create, for example, affordable housing. So, so my experience is my own, others have their own distinct experience and opinions. How do we resolve this and give clarity to our lobbyists?
So Chair Quirillo, if I might, uh, Chair Quirillo, members of the board, to respond to Commissioner Thompson's inquiry, I think the best, uh, approach will really begin next week when we have the shorter list of the bills that will be likely actionable by the legislature. And at that point, we can go through those bills. The commissioners can identify those that we would like to be discussing. And then in that time set aside during our work sessions for, for, for the legislative update, we can take that time to then start having those conversations. And then obviously, if there needs to be off, off meeting conversations, one-on-one, those can also take place. And then we can, we staff can then feed that information to Phil, um, as he's doing his, his, his work. So I would say that next week we'll start, um, providing a little bit more definition to what that looks like. Thank you.
Commissioner Toyoka. In addition to that, uh, for the county manager, can we have a process where we have a, we can follow our thoughts or our opinions on certain, uh, bills or any, anything pertaining to the commission through your office? That you can collate that for the, for us so we can have it listed in an agenda before we meet? So we can have like our thought paper before we actually get together?
Absolutely. So I think that's a great idea. As you, um, have visibility on these different bills, if you could send your thoughts, your, your list, um, to myself and Monica, um, we can then pull those two together and then start agenda, um, listing those so that the board knows which ones are going to be discussed during which work sessions. Because obviously we'll have to take an iterative approach to it and schedule them out over a number of weeks depending upon timing issues. So.
And then I don't know if those, those opinions or whatever of the individuals would be a more prone to an executive session instead of an open. So then we can be, or is it, I don't know the, the proper format.
So yeah.
We have a unified front as a, as a board.
So, um, what I would say is that certainly, um, looking at those legislative bills that, that you're interested in, sending, uh, your list and your feedback to staff would be helpful. And we can share that with Phil and then have a conversation as a board. And then obviously some, there will be agreement with the board and then some there may not be. And so, um, so we will go through that process, but that will all have to happen, um, in regular work session. And then we can have, have meetings between staff and individual board members and Phil and individual board members also. So we will piece that together, um, but that will happen in regular session. So.
And Monica and commissioners, I can make myself available anytime if anywhere in that process you need me to, uh, to participate.
Great. Thank you, Philip, and hopeful we'll get a nice short list next week.
Yes, I'm, that would be helpful. Thank you all. Have a great rest of the week.
Thanks, and you too. Next, we'll move on to the public health update. Margo, our county health director is here.
Hey, good morning, commissioners. Um, so I do have a little bit of an update for you. Let's see, first of all, uh, our point person on the outreach strategy is, uh, is very busy and I will have more details about what that's going to look like in terms of, um, uh, the whole county by Friday or early next week. So that's very encouraging as our clinics are ramping up. As always, we are debriefing and identifying glitches to address and make the process much smoother for the public. And so we continue to work on those and convene daily as the task force. There's a video that's going to be released and really want to commend the communications team, Catherine, Tom Bennett, on how to register, how to come to the county website, how to complete the survey. Once you complete the survey, how to schedule an appointment and then a walkthrough of an actual clinic. So they did an excellent job on that. And I think it's going to, um, perhaps ease some anxiety that some members of the public may have, but also really to simplify, um, the process and create a greater understanding. So, um, really appreciate that work. We also, Medics is now on site for our clinics and we are in the process of finalizing that agreement with them. So I think that's a really important step towards just maximizing, optimizing our safety, mitigating any risk to anyone. We remain in the lower risk level as a county, which is fantastic. And, um, I just spoke with Jeff Caulfield at the state and, um, there is a meeting to be scheduled that will include Tillamook County, Chris and myself around future vaccine allocations, knowing we're going to be receiving increased doses. So that call should happen today or in the next couple of days. That's all. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Commissioner Webb.
I am continuing, uh, to get complaints and confusion from people about this word survey. People are saying to me, well, I'm going to the website, but I don't want to take a survey. You know, what, i- is it too late in the game to do anything about this very, confusing word that we're using?
Yeah, I think that's really helpful. Um, I'm not, I don't feel like I'm the best person to answer that because I wasn't hearing the development of it, but I think it's really important feedback. And it's something actually, it was a different word when we were developing some of the communication recently around, quote-unquote, completing the survey, but we were using the word database. And my recommendation was that maybe we use different language and call it a registry, simply because the word database can be threatening or misinterpreted as collecting a necessary information. So, um, Commissioner. information. So um, Commissioner Quill, I don't know if you want to add anything to this because of your history with the task force, but I'll certainly take it back to the group and see if um, there's a way to reframe that language.
Yeah, I think when they created the survey, the idea was it was some people signing up several weeks away and they didn't want people's hopes to get up that they were going to immediately and scheduled for a clinic, that it was gonna, it could possibly be I'm off. So it was called the survey just to get an idea how many people were in each of these groups, each one's phase one A, phase one A or phase one B. I think that's the the original intent. Now that things have kind of evolved a little bit, it's not a bad idea to maybe rethink the language and like Margo's suggestion with regards to the database versus registry, I think that was a very good change because it had been referred to as a database. Um, and calling it a registry, I think was it was a better phrase. And and so, yeah, I think this can be taken back to the group.
Yeah, and I think this is an opportunity to
I'm sorry.
normalize, if you will, um, our, how we approach vaccination, right? Because this this pre-screening, this registering, this signing up for this scheduling for vaccinations is something we all do, whether it's in our primary care homes or certainly in public health, right? We don't typically use the language survey, and I think we can start to revisit this as the vaccine distribution expands. And I think it is important that we begin to normalize um the vaccine vaccination process for the coronavirus. So this is really helpful feedback and we'll take it to the group. Thank you.
Well, I um, I have, I questioned the the use of the survey when it first came out. And unfortunately, I was right. I mean, it's just incredibly confusing to people. It is not it it is, it is registering. And I think the word register is the one that people are looking for.
Yeah, registration.
Excuse me?
Yeah, I think maybe the registration form, right? Something like that. And then it it.
Because basically what the message to be is that you're signing up. You're you're putting yourself in the line. Um, and so I think that needs to be very, very clear. People are still much too confused and there is so much bad information out there. Um, I don't know where that's coming from. I don't know whether that's the alternative media or whatever it is, but boy, I just um, I'm just hearing a lot of of really bad information. So I think you know, as clear as we can possibly be, uh, I think is very important. And the fact that we are anticipating that things are coming.
Yeah, perfect.
I get a little nervous uh when I hear that we um, that we are talking to other counties about numbers distribution. I don't, could you, Margo, could you be a little bit more explicit about what the conversations are with Tillamook?
Yeah, no, it's just, it's it's not um allocation between counties. It's just OHA, there are times when they will host conversations or calls that just regionalize the conversation because there's this this fluidity between our counties along the coast, right? So it's a way of us all having the same information at the same time, having a shared understanding, which each of the counties are doing, talking a little bit about strategies. Um, so it it's it's actually very, very helpful and a very constructive conversation. It's not specifically about taking what would be an allocation of vaccine to Clatsop County and deciding whether some of it should go to Tillamook. So, and I will um, following that call, um, uh, you know, as I continue to brief you, I'll bring that information back to the board.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Margo, can you talk just a little bit about last Thursday and how many doses were given out at the fairgrounds?
Oh, sure. I thought I'd already done that. Okay, sorry. It feels a little bit blurry to me. Um. So the clinic um last Thursday went very well. I think we were really anticipating like this surge at the beginning. And again, it's just, you know, really commending um the leadership that Chris has provided, the whole leadership team, the planning, the 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 volunteers who are very constructively contributing to improving operations from one day to the next. So it went very, very smoothly. Um, we had just a few doses left over. I think at the end were six, and so we were able to call back those folks and get them vaccinated. Vincent and I were the last ones to leave the clinic. It ran smoothly. Medics was there. And again, that was, um, there was a situation there where actually, medics did a transport and it was somebody who left the clinic feeling fine. They ended up not feeling so well, returned to the clinic and they were transported. So um, that worked out well without necessarily being um planned or certainly not intended. Um, uh, I think that we gave um close to 900 doses. I think it was 1,400 that were planned to be administered at that clinic. Um, so we didn't administer all the doses and we're finding this now um in some of our smaller clinics. Uh, and it's not a bad thing. What what's happening is we're working through the priority groups, the right demographics. We know we have an upcoming surge um because it's opening up to the demographics and then what will happen the end of March. And then we also have those who are vaccine hesitant, which again, we are addressing those through PSAs and other means. And those who are able to get or choosing to get their second dose somewhere else. None of this is unexpected. It's not a failure of the system operations or planning. This is actually what happens with series vaccinations. And so again, we will address that and I think a lot of it will be resolved naturally as we have more vaccine in the county and it's more widely distributed. Um, and individuals will be able to return to their medical home. So the clinic last Thursday went very well. And um, uh, that's about all I have to report. Again, it's just these amazing volunteers that make it happen and their dedication and their professionalism uh is really uh, it's uh, it's something to be admired and deeply respected.
Commissioner Webb.
I'm sorry, I'm just loaded with questions. Um, how are we handling getting vaccine to people who can't leave their homes?
Great question, very timely. So that is part of our outreach strategy and prioritizing those groups. Um, yesterday was Monday and two of our nurses went out and vaccinated the last staff and residents in um foster homes, um adult foster homes and also an individual who um uh was sort of that one outlier in the IDDD community. Um, as those individuals are identified, they will return to us. I, IDDD is intellectual and developmental disabilities. Um, and that individual also had a caregiver, so we vaccinated that caregiver. We've also added a question to um the uh survey, which will be the signup, right? Um, or something along those lines. Um, and I wanted to really start capturing information about the homebound status. But that in and of itself isn't appropriate question. And I think where we can have alignment with existing sort of um policy language is really important. So I went to my old stomping grounds and used the language that Medicare is using for identifying homebound status for home health patients. So we basically have copied that language, added it to our survey to start getting that information as well. Um, so, um, and then it's happening through our outreach coordinator who is um uh making those points of contact. And then also we have CERT, we have MRC in our community. They also have information about those individuals as well as our local first responders. And they are an integral part of that partnership as well. Oh, and I guess since last Thursday, we are partnering with um the fire district for uh Ms. Birkenfeld. And then they will also help us reach out to the Jewel, Elsie Vine Maple community. They have a part-time coordinator because they're registered vaccinators, they're registered and alert, they can receive vaccine. They want to partner with us. So again, our outreach coordinator I think has a meeting today set up with their coordinator to to say, how do we get to these folks? Um, so it's all happening and I look forward to giving you a more detailed update um soon.
Commissioner Bangs, you got a question?
Um, I have a question or a comment. Um, I was just curious if you are partnering with Northwest Senior Disability Services in some, uh, perfect. I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Yes, absolutely. All of our CBOs and partner organizations, it's one of the reasons why actually the our outreach coordinator and half her time is dedicated to this now. She's one of the health promotion specialists um because she's already very well networked and the work that she does requires that. So it was just a natural segue into this, this role.
Any other questions? Yeah, I just want to say, I I know that Margo identified these two areas. One was outreach and one was not having a medics transport at the fairgrounds. And both of those she tackled right away. And I really appreciate that because both, you know, as she mentioned, it was needed on Thursday to have that medics transport available at the fairgrounds. And then also to do this outreach for folks that can't get out of their homes, that are in adult foster care situations as well, as as well as other situations, but uh can't get to a clinic. Um, she did a great job with with getting that done and and meeting that need. So appreciate that. Dawn?
Chair Quillo, members of the board, just real quickly segueing, I wanted to to address the executive session that we actually have scheduled today. And it goes back to Commissioner Toyoka's um comments about having a session to talk about um the public works um relocation project. So um after the work session agenda, we'd like to go into executive session and have a preliminary conversation about where we are with those property issues. Um, and then I did want to also state that I sent out an email this morning with some potentially modified language uh for your board to just review regarding the right-of-way ordinance. So if, as you have an opportunity to take a look at that, feel free to give me co- um uh comments without um attaching it to all the board members. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dawn, and and thank you, Margo. And we'll go ahead and move on to the comprehensive plan update. And Gail is on.
Yes, good morning, commissioners. So back in December of last year, the board that was sitting at that time went ahead and appointed three new committee members to the Lewis and Clark Citizen Advisory Committee and three members to the Elsie Jewel Citizen Advisory Committee. At the time that the board had that discussion and made those appointments, uh, they, the members at that time expressed some concerns that perhaps those appointments should wait until after the two new commissioners, Commissioner Banks and Commissioner Toyoka were appointed and installed uh in January of this year. So the compromise that we came up with was that there would be appointments in December of last year, but that staff would go ahead and also do a new call for applicants. And we did that, we issued that January 5th. The deadline to submit your applications was on February 12th. And we received three applications, uh, Richard Bash, who is in Incorporated Seaside, Mary Olson, who is in the Northeast Planning area, which is District Four, Commissioner Bangs. And then also Robert Taylor, who's within the Clatsop Plains Planning area, and that would be District Two, Commissioner Toyoka. Uh, if the board wants to move ahead with additional appointments, I do want to point out that we will need to do some amendments to our Citizen Advisory Committee bylaws. Uh, right now, the planning areas are limited to three to five members. Uh, we're over that right now in the Clatsop Plains area. We have seven members. Uh, the Northeast area currently has five, so they're at their cap as well. So we would need to do some amendments for those. Uh, the countywide Citizen Advisory Committee is capped at 11 members and they're currently at 10 right now. So if uh the board were to move forward with an additional appointment to that uh committee, we would not need to amend those bylaws. Uh, we've really presented this for discussion today and we would be bringing back a formal agenda item at the April 14th board meeting. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions? Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, Department Director Henrickson, you have done admirable service uh now and always. And this is really another example of that. This information is clear and um value neutral, which I think is appropriate for the planning department. And um we as a Board of County Commissioners should support good public service that is value neutral, that is legal, that is ethical um and does excellent public service. Given my little um statement of intention there, going forward, if we were to amend the bylaws and um allow for an increased membership, do you see any functional problems with that?
Well, there's always, the the larger a committee that you have, there's always more challenges to trying to reach consensus or making sure that you have everybody able to participate in a discussion. Um. It's been working well, actually, on the Clatsop Plains Committee with our seven members. Uh, they uh participate very well. They communicate well, they have differing opinions and um don't always come to consensus and agreement, but they're able to discuss their opinions. It is, it's like every other committee, you know, you, there's always pros and cons.
So, so follow up. I, unless I hear from you um that there is an overriding concern that we should not do it, I'm in favor of doing it because I think a more robust citizen participation effort that is still manageable, that is legal, ethical, value neutral and all that sort of thing is is good. So uh, if you're not telling me that it's a bad idea, I'm going to be for it.
Okay.
Oh, sorry, Gail. Commissioner Bangs.
I tend to echo that statement of as long as what is currently occurring or as long as I just, I I like, if somebody wants to volunteer and be a part of a discussion as a community member, I always want to be able to encourage that part, participation. Um, and and be able to encourage that person to volunteer. And so as long as you're not seeing uh an issue with with it, then then I tend to agree with Leanne in this process. But then also I had a question is, is why is it different across the county on committee member caps? Like why, what, what created those differences, I guess? Because it doesn't seem to be based off of land base or land size of those districts.
Yeah, so um, there are six planning areas within the county and we, each planning area by the bylaws has a cap of three to five members. So Northeast is three to five, Southwest Coastal is three to five. In the case of Elsie Jewel, where they've actually been combined with Seaside Rural, uh, because we couldn't get uh enough members and still struggle to keep that committee filled, they're still limited for the two planning areas for three to five. Um, we made the countywide larger because the way that that was intended to operate is that there would be five appointed members by the board that basically represented the interests of the incorporated areas. And then each planning area appointed their own liaison to that uh countywide board as well, which is why their number is capped at 11. So.
Thank you for that, Claire.
You're welcome. And we do also have another work uh session item scheduled about the comprehensive plan update on April 20th as well, just to let you know.
Okay. Um, and so just to reiterate, um what, what change? You're you're just requesting and I don't know, permission is the wrong, wrong word to use, but you're you're asking us if if the number increase is okay with us, correct?
Um, actually. Actually, what I was hoping to ask was not, not so much to ask, but perhaps I should have asked, was to point out the fact that if the board wants to go ahead with these appointments, I didn't catch it when we did this in December, we should have actually changed the bylaws then. But as we move forward, if we want to continue to appoint members, then we do, we really should go back and clean up the bylaws.
Okay. So, so that was the, what we're getting up is, is we need to clean up the bylaws then. I'm all for cleaning up bylaws. I feel like that that's good business and good government. So whatever we need to do to do that.
Any other questions? And I think we're all in agreement then. Thank you, Gail. And the next item is the development of land use planning work plan, process and schedule. And Gail, you're up again.
Yep. Thank you. So last year, the board was very busy and they adopted their strategic planning process, which was, as you know, aimed to help identify focus areas and action items that staff would then focus on to complete what you wanted to do in your work plan that year. What we would like to do with community development and specifically our land use planning division is to tie into that process that you've established as a board. We have a planning commission who, who's very eager to tackle a lot of different items. They have a lot of diverse opinions and a lot of ideas that they're entrusted in sharing. And so in order to help us move forward in a very orderly way, where we know that we're focused on what the board's priorities are and making sure that the work that community development staff have identified that we need to do either because of regulations or in order to meet the board's goals, we would like to put forward a work plan program. And this is a little bit new. It's the first time that I'm instituting it since I've been here. And we did include in your packet, starting on page 29 of your packet today, we, our, our work plan projects for fiscal year 2122. And they're more or less listed in order of priority. Our top two priorities are continuing to work on the comprehensive plan and then also working on the strategic items from the, from the strategic plan as well. So those are our top two priorities. And then moving down from there, we have some cleanup work that we'd like to start tackling. We obviously have some ongoing discussions that we need to have about short-term rentals. We would like to do some cleanup on our parking regs and make those more in line with reality. We need to do some work on how we process subdivisions and partitions. Our regulations are extremely dated, calling for India Inc. and very specific types of paper that is no longer in use. So we, we have a lot to do. And what we would like to do is annually, like you do with your strategic plan, bring this to the board. And that way we know what you would like us to focus on as a department and a planning commission. We know what we need to budget for in the upcoming year and we know that we're all moving forward focused on the same items. Because fiscal year 2122 is approaching rapidly and we are a little bit behind in proposing this process, this year we want to propose an abbreviated process that would start now with our discussion. We would then take that to the planning commission in April for additional input, come back before the board for one final work session in May. And then in June, have the board officially review and adopt the planning work plan. And then in July, with the new fiscal year, begin implementing that. In a normal year, moving forward, then we would actually start that process in October to give us more time to discuss various items. Perhaps, you know, the board wanted to have even a joint work session with the planning commission in the future. But for right now, we're, we're working with the abbreviated version. So today, really what I'm asking for is some input from the board about, first of all, are you in agreement with the work plan that we've put forward itself, the actual items that we're proposing to work on? And then any comment or input you have about our proposed scheduling as we move forward. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
I see Commissioner Thompson has questions.
Thank you, sir. Well, this, you know, I was on the planning commission for, I think it was five plus years. And so it's a, an abiding interest of mine. This again is excellent public service. This is something that has been needed for as long as I can remember, which is over a decade, really. So well done on this. I have questions. Can I go through page by page now? Is this the time on the agenda for doing that?
Yeah, we have 30 minutes scheduled for this.
Okay, I'm going to go fast then. I'm looking at page 32 in our, in our packet. When we look at, for example, water assessment study, do you know that Regional Solutions with AOC, Andy Smith is working on that as well? So I'm, I'm part of a meeting to talk about that. I would like us to tie into Regional Solutions at AOC. Andy Smith is the particular staff involved with that. In terms of fire protection education, I think it's great to talk about fire protection, period. Education is a start. But when I look at the cast of characters, we have the Clotsap County Fire Defense Board, Oregon State University Cooperative Extension. Well, okay, so that's a start, but, but really this is a runaway train. I've been talking with DEQ staff on smoke issues and water quality because of wildfires, been talking with state parks also about the same. We have a flood of tourists. We've had a population increase. It's resulted in a flood of tourists. They're building fires. They're building fires all over. Also, there is online camping now, just as we were behind the curve on Airbnb and Vakas and the other short-term rentals that are structures. Now we've got camping that's being done online. This is related to fire and water quality issues. So I hope that this gets beefed up because it's happening in our neighborhoods, at least my neighborhood right now. That's my comment. In terms of environmental quality, later on that page, I think it's wonderful to work with a tourism studio, an education program for visitors and tourists to promote leaving no trace tourism. Well, that's great if you educate them. In the meantime, who's cleaning up the litter, including putting it delicately restroom issues? Because those restrooms don't exist, particularly in a time of COVID. When I'm skipping over then to page 35 of our packet, I see that you're doing something I think is a wonderful idea to update the planning commission training materials and institute a formalized orientation program for newly appointed planning commissioners. I think that's great. I, again, would like to see this effort beefed up as soon as possible in terms of trueing up for all, all currently appointed committee members in any capacity who serve for the county in terms of their legal and ethical conduct, including microaggression. Because too often what I see is episodes of that microaggression. We're on a limited timeframe, so I'm not going to go into chapter and verse on that. In terms farther down that page, the ad hoc advisory committee and the parking standards, when we're looking at the Arch Cape STR ordinance, what happened years ago can best be captured by an unfortunate phrase, quasi judicial authority. And what that meant was that local neighbors considered themselves as having the force of law to impose laws on their neighbors that were not laws. I see that methodology, that train of thought continuing, it concerns me greatly because neighbors do not have the right to have their will or their ideas or their passion, I've said this before, be considered law. And they are trying to enforce it as law. That's what happened eventually with Arch Cape Design Review. It went from being a tool for negotiating differences to a body that had quasi judicial status and enforced as a weapon constraints on their neighbors' exercise of their legal rights. We went south on that and several members objected strongly to the elimination of Arch Cape Design Review. Other neighbors called for it and cheered it on, but because of the, I want to say the level of conflict involved, that continues to this day. I have people reporting being accosted by community members in my neighborhood, asking them, what's your name and what's your business here? There are signs that are bolted through trees in my neighborhood. It's unfortunate that that train of thought methodology, that sense of neighbors having the right to enforce their limits on other people, that really can't continue. I realize we're in a time of change with population pressure, with development pressure, with all kinds of changes that people are not comfortable in dealing with. This, what you're doing here is, is resolving these conflicts. And to the extent that you don't resolve these conflicts, they continue. So I want to support your efforts. I want to applaud your efforts. And I want to raise these issues as concerns so that we, as a county Board of Commissioners, can work with both our appointed surrogates and with community members, because we have to. There are people who think that because the public is at the top of the org chart, that means individual members of the public can enforce their will. That's not how it works. So please continue to help us, help you do the right thing. Thank you, colleagues.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Any other comments, questions from Commissioner Webb?
In the interest of, of brevity, I think this is terrific. I don't know how you're going to do it with your present staff. You know, Gail, you had some lies in here. Because I happen to know that one FTE in your department works about 20 hours a week. So I just don't know how you're going to do it. I mean, have you, have you, have you, you talked about the, this being the plan. And I'm sorry, because when I was reading it, I didn't realize that you were looking basically ahead to the next fiscal year with this. But so, so do you think that you can get this done with, with the staff that you have? Or have you requested additional staff?
Well, right now, we, we don't have physical space for additional staff. So at this point, I'm not requesting additional staff. I did put a request in, because we've had organizational changes throughout the county, that's changed how some of our money we were spending has freed it up in terms of GIS personnel. We did make a request for some consultant work to help us with some of the staff load in terms of staff reports. But I did put a caveat in my cover memo that said, you know, because of staffing limitations and time constraints, we won't be able to accomplish everything in the upcoming fiscal year, but that as priority items get completed, then we would move other items off the list. So.
Okay. I, I just, I guess I'm concerned that this is so ambitious, that I'm just worried that you're gonna, I'm just worried that, that we're just really overworking our staff. That, that's true across the county. But I think that especially in your department. The other issue, Gail, was that I, I noticed that there were several places that you stipulated needing resources for, for consulting services. And I, I support that greatly. I think that in general, in the county, and I guess we'll talk about this in the budget process, but we lack a lot of expertise that I think we, we need to begin to have. Folks with, folks with, with environmental capabilities. There are so many times when we can turn to the extension service, but there are, we just have ongoing needs for what I would call environmental engineering. And I don't know quite where that goes, but, but you had a little bit of that in, in here. So otherwise, I think this is a beautiful plan. And I just hope we can get you the resources to do it. And thanks for, I mean, this, this in itself was a lot of work and I, I just, I think it's terrific. Thank you so much. We're so lucky to have you.
Thank you, Commissioner Webb. Commissioner Bangs?
Well, I have to agree. This is a very robust plan. I mean, this is, this is an amazing list of goals. And I really kind of enjoyed reading it just because it, it's, it's a, it's robust. And I, I like each individual subsection, how you, how you've listed staff contribution. And I encourage delegation in this, as much delegation as possible across our staff, so that it's not falling on the shoulders of, of a small group of individuals. I also, as I'm looking through this, I'm looking at a set, number two, section D, economic development and evaluation of regulatory barriers. I was really hoping that we could put in here somewhere an evaluation of zoning and activities, economic activities by zoning. And just for the, the idea of how, how can we look at the different types of zoning across our county that we have? And what types of activities can we support on those specified zones? I know that the farming, the EFU zoning is pretty limited on the economic activities that can, can occur on private property in that zoning. And so if we can just look through and have a accounting and an evaluation of the current regulatory barriers, it is for folks who are looking to start their own business and on their, on their private property. And then also I, this is a big squirrel, but it's squirreling back to something that Commissioner Thompson stated about how we have Airbnb's and STRs. Well, now we have campsite STRs and they're online right now as we speak. And I don't know if we have any regulations or zoning laws in regards to renting out your backyard for a campsite. I, I was doing some Googling last night in regards to that. So I just, I just wanted to, to follow up with Commissioner Thompson that, that, you know, this is, this is a new up and coming trend. I, I have the website and I'll share it with you, Gail, about the campsites that we have in Clotsap County that are being currently rented. I just didn't know that was possible myself until I started reading it. So anyhow, figure, an encouragement to stay up on the trends of what's occurring beyond just our STRs and our Airbnb's. There's, there's a whole new world out there. So anyhow, thank you, Gail, for all of your hard work.
Thank you, Commissioner Bangs. Any other questions, comments on the process and what Gail has laid out for us? Commissioner Thompson?
Just one quick follow-up. I saw, yeah, you need two new staff at least, but no space to put them. What's happening with that? That's a county manager question.
Well, Commissioner Thompson, members of the board, space is certainly one of those issues that is part of our budgeting request for next year is to look at, at some space planning and making some decisions. There's a number of things that we're looking at doing in the interim to try to deal with some of the immediate compression issues within our space. But this has been a long, a long train ride to get to where we are. And obviously, it's a, it's a train ride to get away from where we are. So we are going to start that planning process this coming fiscal year. And of course, you know, the future use of the old jail will be part of that. But we will take an earnest look at that with your board over the coming year.
Thank you.
Any additional questions for Gail? Gail?
I, I just wanted to say also, first of all, thank you to the board. You've always been very supportive of the planning division and it's really appreciated. And I just want to point out that the planning And I just want to point out that the planning staff is, they're wonderful. They they work so hard. They're dedicated. They're vested. And so. Again, just thank you for your support. It's really appreciated.
Totally agree. Well, this looks like a good roadmap for us. So thank you again for putting this together. Oh, Commissioner Banks?
I just wanted to ask, what is the best way to communicate as we're looking through this plan a little bit more deeply if we we notice or have a question? Should we direct questions to you, Ms. Henrickson?
I'm absolutely, yep, I'm absolutely fine with that.
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
Anything additional? Well, we don't have anything else on the agenda except for an executive session. So to everyone that's joined us, the Clatsup County Board of Commissioners will now.